Godly wisdom that we might make decisions wisely for those, our constituents of the county. We pray you would just be with those that protect us, those that wear badges and uniform and keep us safe, and we pray you would direct us in our lives that what we do and say would be a blessing to your name, we pray in Christ's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Let's start with the minutes. Any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Payroll number four, calendar year 2006, totals $203,838.58. We had a total of 177 claims in the amount of $266,100.
Motion to approve payroll and claims?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First up, Monty.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
We have 72 inmates and seven are DOC. Only thing, other thing, as we were talking about the state passed a law where we're to help inmates apply for Medicaid so they can turn the application in when they get out of incarceration. We just finally received a contract from the state last week, plus our medical provider who was willing to be the navigator, and I forward to them Roy for him to look at.
So we can negotiate, work that out, and maybe bring that back at a March meeting and have that signed. And, yeah, makes good sense. If you guys had any questions?
I guess I'll read it, and the only thing that I have question on that you might want to look at, Roy, is it was a little bit open-ended. It was $15 per application that they would charge upfront, but then they said they would charge at their cost for anything additional that they had to do beyond that, which was like birth certificate and stuff. And I saw that you had the other part with the contract with the Health Department, which is great, but they didn't say who was going to be working on it, what their hourly wage was. It was kind of left open-ended that we might get costs that we might not be able to contain. So that might be something we need to define.
Okay.
But otherwise, it looked good. It just said, you know, like wages and stuff, and it didn't say who was doing what for how many hours or how much per hour or anything like that.
I'll talk to you again on that. I think they were thinking the open end was if they had to, like you said, the birth certificates if they're...
And there will be...
We might have an agreement with Wells County, but if they're born in Allen County or other counties, what the situation would be on that.
Well, I think part of that is it was saying that the sheriff is supposed to be designated representative to assist the inmate in the application process, and that's an online application. But my experience in Medicaid with respect to nursing home costs is the application's just part. You put that in, get that started, but the actual approval comes from the eligibility.
Right.
And again, the elderly, the nursing home costs, it depends on financial resources, this and that. The only thing I gathered from Medicaid for somebody under 65 would be a disability or there was still some income limitations.
Right.
So a lot of that eligibility is dependent on the inmate's own information.
Mm-hmm.
I think the other part of that was, from the information I had, that was they were creating a presumptive eligibility. So you do the filing, and they're presumed to be eligible, so you can get that... anyways, you can presumably reduce your cost by the inmate being on Medicaid. But I agree with you, there ought to be some, at least, discernment of what they're going to charge above and beyond at $15 to do the Medicaid process. Another thing was the FSA, FSSA website had a list of who are navigators in your county, so I clicked on Wells and didn't see them, but I know that they qualify control. It's from Delaware, so I clicked on Delaware and didn't see them either. But if they, Monty said they may be just getting into this because of their experience in providing the medical care for inmates, so presumably it's not going to be their first rodeo.
Right. They're taking care of the medical part for over half the jails in the state now, so I imagine that's why they thought, and that's a necessity to get into it, to help.
But besides, if that's the direction that the sheriff's office and the commissioners want to go, to hire a navigator, I think the next step would be for me to contact FSSA and say, "We're considering doing this. Would you please send us an actual contract form?" They did have their attachment that's got, you know, like, "Don't sign this," but, you know, it's blocking some of the characters, but if you read that, it says, you know, "We're not going to negotiate with 92 counties," so this is a take it or leave it thing. But from reviewing that contract, it's also whatever the state pays, the county's going to reimburse them. I was talking with Monty. Presumably, the savings is from the fact that the medical services provider is going to be compensated at Medicaid rates rather than private pay rates.
What we've always had to pay was Medicaid plus 4% is what the jail pays on hospital bills.
So without necessarily deciding anything, that would probably be the next step, is to get a proposed contract from the state that you can consider along with the quality control or any other navigator that you might want to consider.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right now, they are scheduled to close it and start next Monday, the 22nd. The schedule said they were hoping to be done by the 29th of June. So that's, I thought, a pretty aggressive schedule.
Yeah.
To have it done that fast and stuff like that, because it was originally supposed to be in March through August. That's what it's supposed to be and stuff like that. So also, when we're up there, they requested another engineer assignment letter from USI, I know we took resumes for an engineer, and I pushed for an engineer to do this project, because the one that was signed before and sent there... so I'm going to push again to do some interviews and see if we can get somebody hired.
I don't think Guy's any with you anymore, is he?
Right. What they require is that we document who the project supervisor is and any of our staff
My ERC does run out March 10th, so just to let you know.
Part of that, Beth, if I'm not mistaken, we have to have an executive meeting to discuss
that's going to be on the project inspecting it. So I've got some copies for you guys to sign. That individual's bar's trustor, and this details where it is.
any personnel, correct?
Yeah.
It's just an Endot requirement, so they know who it is.
And how much notice lead time does that have to be publicized?
We have to send them resumes and qualifications for those individuals.
We have 48-hour notice to publicize or a executive session.
Just one step. And Ed's right, when we were awarded the contract officially, the gentleman that we
I guess the option, if anybody would be available toward the end of this week or
had assigned is no longer with us, so it's just something we needed to change. Got copies of that for you to sign.
sometime after March 1st.
I'll be out of town the first two weeks of March.
I did three, one for the county, one for us, and an extra.
And then the second week, we have road school.
Do we need a motion for this? For this... Yeah.
So you don't sign it?
I don't know, maybe late this week, possibly Friday.
Engineer...
Yeah, motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It's lunchtime.
Aye.
I'm working Friday.
I mean, that's basically... I don't think we'd need more than an hour to discuss what we need to discuss. Can we have a meeting, figure 12 o'clock? Advertise it at 12 o'clock? Would that be okay?
On Friday?
Just coming Friday?
12 noon.
And you guys pick the place, so...
Here?
Sure.
Me and Toby have sort of been talking to them. We actually checked with them after our meeting last week, stuff like that. Right now, it's supposed to start, the project's supposed to start as far as the River Bridge project on the 7th. They are going to tie this other project in with it. It's not going to be a replacement. It's just going to be putting supports underneath it, and it'll probably extend the contract for about 11 days. So, and I know Roy's got the no trucks ordinance for 300 South, so I didn't know if we wanted to do that as part of this, for you guys to sign that, or...
You guys seen this? Any questions?
I don't have any.
I'll entertain a motion then for 2016. Would this be O1, Beth?
Yeah.
So the motion, second?
No, ma'am.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll probably coordinate with Adams County when they're going to put theirs up and probably try to put them all at the same time. So I don't know where they're at on theirs.
You had said that they contacted you, and then I contacted Mark Berry, and he sent me their draft, and I didn't see their... I'm assuming their road is also 300 South?
Yes.
And I didn't see that listed, but I looked at his email and said he was going to bring it to their commissioners, so I don't know.
I think that might be happening today.
It looked like what they were doing was they just have a, here's our no-truck ordinance, and we just add roads, add or subtract roads to that.
I think there was like five or six locations that they were adding on to that.
I did see Lynn Grove. Yeah, I don't know. That's part of it.
And several people asked me that are traveling that section, some of the farmers down at Reynolds and people that utilize that stretch.
Of 218, yeah. Yeah. That's not a good city. And Burn Ready Mix.
Yeah. Big deal.
Yeah, yeah, so. Did send letters out to the people I told you about, about the dumpsters. We had four places. I sent letters out, gave them until next Monday to try to get them moved off the right way, so we'll see what kind of response we get from the landowners and stuff like that. So just some of the other stuff that we've been doing. Still running brush crews. Brush mowers up in Jefferson. We're about done with that. When we get done, we'll probably move it into Liberty. So that's all I have.
Ed, have you sent out the letters we spoke of for the meeting at the church?
Yes, yes. They were sent out last Friday.
Also, the application for road conversions?
Right.
That we've kind of agreed to, and the IT department affected this morning, I believe, will put that application in motion. I guess it's a process. Those that are interested in the county to apply for a conversion on their road, it gives a list of questions to, I guess, fill out and reply to Ed. It gives a lead person, and it gives different, I mean, homes on the road, what's the values of the properties on the road, whether it ties to another paved road, one section or both sections, or if it's an isolated road. If there's a business on the property, there's a couple other questions in regard to that application. And Ed and probably us commissioners will, by May 1st, try to decipher how many we have and prioritize them out and see where our funding's going to be. We anticipate to have this many and be allowed to do this many, so we're not sure where that's going to lead, but we have a process now in place, so... You had sent letters out regarding all three of the road sections that I worked on right-ofways for?
Yes, yes. Yeah, they went out Friday. Yes, they went out. So you might get some phone calls, too.
Well, I'd rather get phone calls so we can correct documents than getting back and then they're unusable because they didn't sign them right, or they signed by our attorney or whatever.
And you're going to be there, what, 7 to 9?
We just advertised it for 7, and we'll be there as long as we have to be.
Okay, all right.
I don't know. I don't know how many questions we'll have, and...
And that's on the 25th?
25th, yeah. How many questions we'll have, and some of them might already have the right-ofways signed, so, yeah, we'll have a nary there. Lisa, I close, won't be there.
And for the public, what this, Ed, you had explained what this meeting's about in regards to road conversions.
Yeah. We have three roads up in Union Township that we're working on getting right-ofways for. One of the main reasons we're doing it is the AEP project up there that's going in Union Township. There'll be some stone available for that project when they start taking the driveways out. Should be sometime this year. They haven't gave me a definite. They just said this year, so we're going to try to utilize that stone as base stone for them road projects.
And that product is free?
That product is free. They will load it on our trucks.
And the meeting that you're holding is for right-ofway...
Right-ofway documents to get signed.
And notarization and make sure everything's... In the past, we've not done that. Over the years, we would just rely on the community to bring these in, and so we're reaching out to the community to have one meeting so that they can meet. Everyone gets the documentation they need signed, and all information should be in one-stop-shop type thing. So we're trying to facilitate and move things forward a little better.
Anything else?
No. I'll have Roger put that closure on the website, too, for the bridge, and hopefully Jessica will put it on the paper.
I have nothing. I'm just here to answer questions in case there's any...
It's good to see you.
Yeah.
You asked a question about the 300 South ordinance about automatically terminating, and I had no provision in that. And I responded that we didn't do that about the road at Markle either. And from the past, it looks like the commissioners that adopted ordinance was repealing those road closures. So I guess my question to commissioners is, do you want me to...
Underneath that, Roy, you know, the one structure that they're out there on 218 that they're going to reinforce, it's temporary, so probably in about three years, that structure will probably be replaced. So, you know, that ordinance should stand for the next five years at least. Then, if you want to repeal it...
Right. But we did that about, was it Oak Road?
Oak Road, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you want to repeal that Oak Road no-truck ordinance, because we didn't have any termination on that. If so, I can draft an ordinance, so your next meeting, you can repeal that.
Sure.
Makes sense.
But at least from what I can see, that's how you've done it in the past, is you've made it, you put weight limits on, but without any automatic termination. You've just done that when the need terminated.
Yeah, this would be a good thing to do. Yeah, go forward with that.
Okay.
Good question. Thank you.
Ben also has your bridge inspection information, so he's going to give that to you.
Thanks, Toby.
Yeah, if I could just have a quick second of your time. We completed your Phase 2 inspections in October. I met with you guys in January. Since then, we finalized your books. I have flash drives for you guys, I think. Commissioner Robbins, you had two that you wanted, but I'll give you those, and I'll explain what's on there. Saving some trees by doing this. Beth, I see what you wanted one.
Thank you.
Okay. On that flash drive is basically what's in these books, which is there is a SINA sheet, structure, inventory, and appraisal sheet for every bridge. That's in one gigantic PDF file. There's also individual folders for every bridge, and that has more detailed photographs of our findings on all the bridges. As you may or may not be aware, it's a four-year contract for your bridge inspections. It's federally mandated, so every two years, we go out and inspect every bridge in the county. A new wrinkle in the last, I don't know, Toby, what, three years, bridges that are under a certain level of deficiency have to be inspected on a 12-month interval. You guys have 13. There's 131 bridges. There's 13 that are actually inspected on a 12-month interval. So the last thing that we will do in October of this year is do what we call your Phase 2A 12-month inspections, and that will be it for us as far as this contract. Somewhere in that timeframe, I would recommend re-advertising and getting a consultant onboard. Amazingly, the process can take up to a year, so they like you to do that in October of this year, so that the new consultant, hopefully us, can continue to do that. Phase 1 would be in October of '17. Another buzzword that's out there right now, just for your references, the month that your first inspections begin is now referred to as a compliance month. And so for Wells County, October is your compliance month, and that will be that way forever, you know, unless Endot chooses to change it or the county changes it. The other important things that are on that flash drive, and they're in your books, physical books, I've got one for Ed and one for Beth, is maps, locates the bridges, shows you where they are. There's a priority schedule which notes the replacement recommendations, the rehab recommendations, and then also maintenance items that, you know, the county should look after. All that information's been gone through with Ed and Toby. They're aware of, you know, what the, and kind of had significant input on the priorities, and we moved some things around to the extent possible. That's it, other than, I did bring, just if you're interested, that's kind of an example of a condensed SINA sheet instead of a 35-page document, which is what you would get for each bridge if you printed it out. We do it on one page, which is just a summary of the bridge, a drawing with the channel and show you what the structure is with some measurements, and then the most pertinent information. So we feel like summarizing is a good thing, particularly when you're not skilled in the art like me, so...
Well, and for reference, bridges, of the 131 bridges, my understanding is classifying a bridge is over 20 feet?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. So even though we might see structures that we think are somewhat of a bridge, they are not 20 feet, so...
No, that's correct. That's it. Unless you guys have questions, as always, you know how to reach me if we can answer anything, and we are going to be inspecting Bridge 193, so we're going to be around this summer. Thank you.
Ben, you're going to have to get a supplemental agreement around for the...
2A.
2A, right?
Correct.
So you're going to bring that...
Actually, I think we included it.
Did that before, didn't you?
It's already done.
Yeah.
Rings a bell.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, this is one of the very challenging things with the way things are set up now. You have to have a supplement. Endot would like each phase of the bridge inspection to now be on a separate PO, so we may be coming back to you with something revised. We do have a supplement that covered 1A and 2A, which are the 12-month. Unfortunately, if that number of bridges changes by even one bridge, we have to revise the supplement. And as you can imagine, it's hard to predict that number when we're doing your Phase 1 inspections. We don't know what, how many bridges are going to be on the 12-month list for 2A. So to answer the question, we do have a supplement. The fact that the possibility that it needs to be revised is very high.
Yeah. Depends on the bridges, number of bridges, because we had 16?
There's 13 now, yeah. Or, sorry, you're right, 16.
I thought it was 12 last time.
Yeah. So...
I think there were 16.
Ed's usually right.
To the point, a lot can change. And for instance, you know, we might, well, and we certainly did, we might have had Bridge 204 down in 1,000 South on your 12-month cycle because it was in bad shape, or it got replaced. So if we wrote the supplement in 2014 for 1A and 2A, obviously, that bridge gets replaced, it gets removed from the... You would think there would be some flexibility, but unfortunately, we have to do what, going forward, they would like a supplement and a PO for each individual phase, so... If what you've signed is not correct, we'll be coming back to you soon. Okay? All right.
Thanks, Ben. You bet.
Thank you.
Next up, Mike.
All right. Be short with us. This is continuation from a month ago's discussion about the Permitting Excellence Coalition. From the last meeting, it was pretty clear that any fees that we were going to pay was going to be too much. Reached back out to the High Performance Government Network, and they said there was a scholarship available, so now we could, if we choose to, join the thing for free. As far as it comes, the scholarship would come from the Northeast Indiana Regional Partnership, so you know where the 2,000 would actually come from. And this is, just to reinforce, this is a program that is for us to utilize to whatever end we want it to. There's no pressure as far as us to adopt anything or whatever of what is discussed. So at this moment, I guess I'd ask if there's any questions from the commissioners. Otherwise, I would ask if you would sign the document.
I think it worked out real well. Appreciate your efforts on that. And so from the $2,000 to zero for Wells County, it works the way it's supposed to work. So thanks, Mike. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Aye.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
And so...
One signature?
No, it's all three of you. It was just one copy, so is it okay if I just run a copy from Endot over to you?
Okay.
Okay.
Good work. Anything else that you need from me while I'm here?
No, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have monthly reports next.
The next thing I had was the Rock Creek Conservancy Director appointment. I had sent that out to you a couple weeks ago, actually. Right after we had our other... We do have a petition to appoint, and it's a reappointment, actually.
Mr. McAfee?
Yes, I was trying to think, who was the...
Roger Wright?
Is it Roger McAfee?
Yes, Roger McAfee.
I make a motion to reappoint Roger McAfee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
3-0.
Does not require any signatures, so... Yes, it does. There's the order. Five copies.
Oh.
So, at this moment, I guess I'd ask if there's any questions from the commissioners, otherwise, I would ask a few and sign the document.
I think it worked out real well. Appreciate your efforts on that, and so from the $2,000 to zero for Wells County, it works the way it's supposed to work. So, thanks, Mike. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Aye.
Very good. Thanks, Mike.
And so...
One signature?
All three of you, just one copy, so is it okay if I just run a copy of it out over here?
That'd be fine.
Okay. Good work.
Anything else that you need from me while I'm here?
No, thanks.
Thank you. I have monthly reports next.
The next thing I had was the Rock Creek Conservancy Director Appointment. And I had sent that out to you a couple weeks ago, actually.
Yeah.
Right after we had our other, we do have a petition to appoint, and it's a reappointment, actually.
Mr. McAfee?
Yes, I was trying to think, who was the?
Roger Wright.
Is it Roger McAfee?
Yes, Roger McAfee.
I make a motion to reappoint Roger McAfee.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
3-0.
Does not require any signatures, so. Yes, it does. There's the order. Five copies.
Oh. Gosh. Seems a little extra, I guess. Must be really important.
It's just extravagant to put your names on top.
Hmm. Bit sloppy, I can't write my name anymore.
Not all right.
For another TA. What are those, TIA's, what they call? Yeah, I got those, I'm sure.
Kansas, you make a tab.
Bouncing around.
Handcrafted mail. A lot of stuff. Okay. The next thing I had was the Maximus Agreement. I had sent that to Roy, and I did get an email back that he has reviewed it and didn't see any questions with that, if we want to renew our consulting with Maximus again to do our indirect cost analysis for us.
What exactly does that mean? I was trying to figure that.
What they do is they then go in and it's kind of like the things behind the scenes, like the payroll, the health insurance, the building that's required, and all the expenses that not directly support the 4D program but indirectly do, so then they can do this cost analysis, and then they send it down. It's a whole big paper and stuff.
It's kind of nebulous, and I was reading, I was like, what's that about?
It does, it does bring in quite a bit of money, you know, to the county, you know, for their services, so. And we've used them, yeah.
I'm not arguing with it, I was just trying to understand.
It is kind of, that's why it's good to have a consultant do it.
I was the same thing when I started, and just like try to determine.
Yeah, because it is, it is, you know, this is what they do, so they, they know exactly where they come in, they come to the office, we give them a bunch of reports, and they'll put it all together for us, and we review it and send it in, and then we get quarterly payments back, you know, from the federal, it's a federal grant, you know, our federal money that comes back, so.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, on favor?
Aye.
And it just requires one signature. Do you want me to sign, or do you want Blake as president to sign? It doesn't matter.
You can sign it.
Passing off pretty quick.
Okay. Okay, then, the next thing I have is Jackson Township. Trustee was in my office this past week, and he did bring his eligibility standards, which does fall under the same as what the rest of the county trustees are, so we just need to make it a part of our minutes that he did supply us with the eligibility standards. It doesn't require any signatures, but just to let you know that he did supply it the same as what all the other ones have.
Got you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can't write, I have enough here. Okay, did I have, okay, the only other thing I had is Blake was in the office last week and asked about the reimbursements that we're doing for the rescue runs, so asked me to just bring that in in case we want to discuss anything like that.
I know we had talked about, you know, bringing, each department bringing the bills and basically getting reimbursement until the money runs out. Or do we want to make, make a certain percentage based on previous, I mean, you still have to submit their amount of runs, but just to say, you're going to get so much, you're going to get so much. I think if I calculate, it was something like Lufkin was 13, Austin was five, and Liberty was two, but I didn't know if that's the equitable way to do it, or just say, until the money runs out, the money runs out. Because I think we had 20,000 set aside. We really didn't have a contract.
Right.
But we ran short, or...
Yeah, we ran out, yeah.
So, or at least bring it up, and then you guys, we can talk about it at our next meeting.
Okay.
And bring something, but I just, I had it in my minutes from last time, and I just didn't want to forget about it.
Yeah, we, we base that kind of on what the runs were at the time, when everyone was in front of us, and because there was only X amount of 20,000, it's, it was, that's what was there, and use it accordingly, and based on what Blake just said. I'll give it some more thought, but I think we're still going to run down that road based on runs. I think Liberty was in favor, and then sometimes they weren't even applying for it, so.
Liberty won a good number of years.
They were thankful for their truck.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, we make a big commitment every, what's it, five or seven years?
Seven.
The vehicle that's, you know, normally close to half a million dollars.
Yeah.
Well, the only thing is, depending on who's going to do the runs quicker, you know, so, I mean, the city of Lufkin could end up with 20,000, and both the others end up with zero, depending on when they come through, so.
Yeah, and we, I won't let that happen.
Yeah, but the way it is right now, that's what could happen.
Okay.
I think last year, Liberty, did Liberty, Ben, were they able to make a claim?
I think they did do a claim last year, and they did get...
They did?
They did get a little bit.
Check that out.
But we ran out like in July.
Right.
On 2nd, June, July is when it ran out, so.
Yeah, so, I don't know. We probably should have something kind of policy.
Do you need it today?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
We just wanted to bring it up so we could discuss it again.
Because I can give you one.
We probably should have a policy, because we don't really have anything except for when it's done, it's done, and first come, first served, you know, and if that's the way you want the policy to be, that's fine, you know, but we should have a policy.
I agree.
That says how we want to, to disperse the funds.
Okay. Okay. I don't have anything else.
Anything, Roy?
No.
Media? Audience?
Touch smiley face.
Quiet.
Okay.
Most adjourned.
You're doing good.
We're done.
Thanks.
Aye.